Everybody, thank you for coming. I'm Bob Lloyd Connell, sheer person of the school board. And we have a great turnout compared so far to most of my other meetings, and thank you for that. So I'll ask you to please rise and join in the pleasurable allegiance.
My pleasurable allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call.
G. Dean.
Here.
J. Brady. E. Flynn. T. Giles. E. Ellison.
Here.
Arlo Maton.
Here.
H. Randall.
Here.
K. Van Bergen.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. First item of business is the consent agenda, one motion to approve the minutes from October 12th, 2023, and approve the minute list. So moved by Ben.
Second.
Seconded by Herb. Any changes or revisions? None, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Next item is the public comment period. If anybody would like to speak in the public comment period, we have a limit of three minutes. It can be extended. We ask that you state your name and the town that you live in. And if you're, as you're approaching three minutes, I'll let you know. So, yes ma'am.
Bonnie Maroney, Town of Carroll, Selectmen. Having heard from several parents in the Town of Carroll about this seventh, eighth grade transition, I would like to ask who set up the transition advisory committee? And didn't it, why didn't they reach out to some of the parents and teachers to ask their thoughts? Why should the students have to ride even longer on the bus than, to go where the bill, excuse me, ride even longer on a bus when there are buildings at the regional that can, are being used for the SAU office staff? Why don't we move them into those classrooms, using, giving them a space to use for the students instead of transporting them all the way to the other places? Other disturbing items that I am hearing are the students are being allowed to come to class dressed as assorted animals and disturbing other students. We are paying over $40,000 per student in this town for our children to be there to learn, not to deal with harassment from fellow students. They should not be allowed to act this way or be removed from the school when they do. They are there to learn. I've also heard from parents of young children that do not want to send their children to the White Mountain Regional School due to all the issues that they are hearing, asking what else they can do. This is truly a problem that needs to be addressed. You don't want the Town of Carroll to leave the system, but nothing appears to be running as it should for the taxes each town pays for a good education. Something needs to be done.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes. Sorry, this gentleman first.
Kyle Former from Jefferson. I just wanted to quickly thank the administration and the teachers, the preschool teachers, for making the adjustments to the four-year-old preschool hours so they're getting that extra day. It really means a lot to the parents that fought for this, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Alex Cody, Bretton Woods, Carroll. And my, the gentleman, I don't see a lot of good coming with this administration. And this move of the seventh and eighth grade is just absolutely ridiculous. My kid lives in Bretton Woods. That's 20 miles from Lancaster, 20 miles from Lancaster. Currently, we, as a lot of parents, thought we would be able to use the bus system, but guess what? We can't because it's over a two-hour ride for a kid. Four hours in a bus at age seven? That's not okay. No child can spend four hours a day in a school bus. And that's going 12 miles. What's gonna happen when it's in Lancaster? Are we talking about three hours, four-hour bus rides each ways, each way? That's just completely unacceptable. I can't even believe that this idea is being floated. It's embarrassing.
Thank you.
I'm Aaron Cody, also from Carroll. I just wanted to share that from the kids' perspective, you know, our kids started the school year riding the bus. We haven't used the bus before because it's already a challenged bus route to get kids from this town, which is the farthest in this direction, as you know, to Whitefield, let alone Lancaster. We are now driving our kids to and from school every single day because they don't, they can't do that. They were becoming miserable every day after school instead. When we pick them up from school, the kids get home around 2:45. On the bus, they get home around 4:15. That's a huge difference. And to call that the providing a bussing option for kids, I don't think is reasonable. To expect a kid to spend that long, and again, at that age, seven-year-olds, six-year-olds, eight-year-olds, to spend many hours a day sitting on the bus. There's not adequate supervision on buses, we all know this. So for this age group to spend that amount of time on a bus is not gonna work. But what that does, if we are looking out for the interest of the kids, then what that means is the parents have to shoulder that. And not all parents have the flexibility to do that. We're thankful that we can. But to ask us now to drive an extra 10 minutes each direction multiple times a day because the bus system hasn't been able to work for our town, I think is inappropriate to expect. I would echo what Bonnie said. If there is a necessity to move these kids, we have a central location, which is the high school. Moving to the far extremity of this district, half of these kids, the seventh and eighth graders, I think would be intolerable, in my opinion.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Sarah Placulo, I live in Twin. I have a dog going into, she'll be going into seventh grade next year, and we are not for moving them to Lancaster at all. I'm hoping that you guys will revisit using the high school. I don't know if that is something also being discussed. Also, most of the feedback that I hear from other parents in the community, they strongly feel also that it's not a good idea. And I'm hoping some sort of survey goes out soon where parents have a chance to voice these opinions. And also, sometimes when these ideas are presented, I feel like it would be more helpful if, instead of just, I mean, if the parents were to have some sort of visual, like some more of a solid plan, because how couldn't they possibly get on board with something that is so vague?
Can I interject a little?
Well, I was gonna.
Can I interject? I hear you, I hear everybody here. This is a feasibility study, there's been absolutely no decisions made. And after this meeting, Jeremy has the surveys and they gone out, they were crafted. And there is a link at the beginning of the survey that does outline, like, the model. I hear you about that transportation. We've been working with WW Berry all year long. We originally had 13 routes budgeted. Right now, we have eight. And it's because there's no bus drivers. We tried to remedy, and we understand that Twin to Whitefield is crazy right now. It's a horrific, horrific ride, but we don't have any solutions right now. We're open to any suggestions. So I will be, in my report, be talking a little bit more about how much we've already looked into different aspects of this seven, eight going to Lancaster and Whitefield being the pre-K center. You'll hear that, but you'll also hear that it's not even near close to any kind of decision whatsoever. Same as the other study. Parents clearly said they did not want the seven, eight at the high school. The board accepted that and said, we're shutting that down. So we hear you, we do hear you.
Just to clarify, the seven, eight advisory committee to the board was formed, I believe it was in March or April of this year. And a request went out to everyone in the district of, were they interested in sitting as a member of the committee? The committee right now is made up of 17 stakeholders. Those 17 people include teachers, administrators, parents, and just taxpayers that don't even have children in the school. I mean, these individuals are represented on this committee. They're tasked with looking at options. They did the seven, eight transition to the high school, didn't, told us, they didn't think it was feasible. Now they're looking at the possibility of seven, eight going to Lancaster. Not done deal? We haven't discussed it as a board. When we get the recommendation from the committee, then we will make a decision. It could be three to four months from now. So we do listen to input. I mean, no matter what you hear on the internet or on social media, this is the truth. There are 17 different stakeholders sitting in a room that are open to the general public, the date that they meet and the times listed on the website. Anybody can go and see, and I don't know if you allow public comment, they probably do. So nothing's done, you know, without anybody knowing.
Josh Robinson from Twin Mountain. Who decided who belongs on this committee? Was it open to anybody?
It was open to everybody.
Where was it publicized?
It was, it was open to everybody, however, the board had to vote.
On who, who sat on the committee?
Yeah, but everybody that applied. Got accepted.
Where was it posted? Was it posted on the school website or was that last email?
Both. Both.
I didn't get an email.
It was almost a year ago.
Still didn't get an email.
Are you a parent?
I am.
You should have gotten an email.
So it wasn't even there?
Did we put it on, on social media and newspaper?
It was on social media. It was emailed to any email addresses that were registered in Power School. It was published in the newspaper.
There was quite a lot advertised.
And it's been discussed here.
Multiple.
Multiple times during.
Yeah, I would say the meetings are open, so, and public comment is allowed, so even if you're not sitting on the committee, you know, please come. I mean, it's meant to be a community process.
And even your voice here is giving us data. We do, we do listen.
I drove from Lancaster, so I'm a Lancaster rep, so I understand.
I'm on the committee, and I say, please come to the meetings, really. Speak up loudly, clear. We do hear you, but we also have to listen to everything.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Serena Beckey. Could you, could you tell us when next that committee meets?
And where?
And where?
We don't have special night and a day, and we had some subcommittee work to do, so the next one isn't, isn't published yet, when we're gonna meet.
It'll be on the.
It'll be, yeah, we'll, we'll blast it out, yeah, it'll be on the, on the second stuff.
So I'm wondering if, listen, you know, like, I hear, like, Rena wouldn't necessarily get a blast from.
Right.
So I'm wondering if maybe, I think you probably are more in tune to town stuff, Rena, and maybe we could share, maybe we could add, like, the town clerk, not town clerk for us, but like, the secretary in this town could put it on the town website?
Like, when we, so normally we post all of our agendas for these meetings at all of the town offices. Maybe we can start sending them, so.
There's no reason not to. That would be a good idea. You can't get enough information.
No, no. And that's how we came to our last decision, it was the input from the people.
Yeah, if you use that same, same groups, definitely, I mean, I think they could.
And you saw that I, somebody might saw that I posted yesterday about this meeting, but I said it was last night. So that's why we don't use social media too often. I had to correct.
You had me worried.
I had to correct it, though. But, and.
Benjamin told us about the meeting.
Who?
Benjamin. At a sort of this meeting that it was gonna be here and that it would be nice for people to come and just listen to them.
No, we appreciate it.
It is.
We really do.
We appreciate having people here to voice their opinions.
Absolutely.
We have many meetings where the room is empty except for the board and the district leadership team.
And of course, every meeting's livestreamed, other than this one, but it will be uploaded tonight or tomorrow morning.
We work for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
We know that.
Any other public comment? See, none public comment, so I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's John Greer from Carroll. And just wanna thank you all for volunteering for the board, it's a big commitment, and we appreciate that very much. I pulled a survey up from the website, the Public School Review, ranked all 455 towns in the state. And we're not doing that well in math and reading skills in Whitefield. I'm just wondering if, if we have a plan, and I don't have an answer. Usually when you, you know, present a problem, you should have a, you know, some suggestion how to fix it. I'm not an educator, all I can do is look at our rankings. Do we have any plans to improve? Because I think we all, we all want that, right? So do we have a plan how we could make it back? That's.
Your ask is incredibly timely, Mr. Greer. The educational programming and curriculum committee have been looking at the most recent desk scores, and we've invited our district leadership team to bring a presentation to a board meeting the second.
November 21st.
The 21st. So November 21st, we'll be reviewing that data for our district specifically, and we've asked the district leadership team to come with plans and solutions. So you're very timely.
I mean, we're all working at this together, and we all want the same thing. And, you know, just down the road, five miles, you know, Profile School ranks on the top third by far, and we're at the bottom of the, you know, the middle range. I mean, it's below mediocre, you know, mediocre would be 50%. But, you know, I'm just thinking, but the kids are all the same, aren't they? I mean, are our kids, you know, from a different socioeconomic background in Bethlehem? Maybe. I'll throw out one thing, I mean, maybe the school size has something to do with it. There's, I looked at that, we have 350-some-odd kids over there versus Bethlehem Profile has 80, 86. And a senior has 143 kids. So maybe it's the size, I don't know. To say, I'm not, not an expert, I'm just voicing my concern.
I mean, when Herb and I met with the district leadership team at programming, part of our questions for them were around root cause. How did we get, how did we get here? Any other questions were around, now what? What do we do? We have the what, in terms of data. So what, what do we do? I don't know, Herb, if you wanna weigh in there either. I mean, it was the longest ed programming meeting we've ever had, and it was robust discussion, and we were pretty clear, I think, in asking our district leadership to.
I mean, I think we have the professionals to get the job done, I just, you know. And I know there's a lot of, you know, issues in the home life, and maybe, I get all that, but, you know, they got the same issues in Bethlehem, maybe, maybe they don't, I don't know. But it's just, you know, I'm really glad to see you guys have noticed it and working on it, that's all.
The data, the newest data just came out, we just haven't, like I said, as Chris said, the superintendent will present the district, the leadership team, what their plans are to do with that data that we haven't seen yet. The administration has, and, but we understand and we know that it's not very good.
Well, when, when we're all over the hill and we need care, those are the students that are gonna be taking care of us. So that's maybe what we're.
Any other comment?
Yes, sir.
A question. What's the necessity of this venture? Is the committee tasked with finding a solution? Or might there be an outcome that there is no solution, everything stays the same?
Which, the seven, eight transition? There may be that it just stays the way it is.
And that's what happened with the previous study about moving to the high school.
So when that ended, were they tasked to find a new solution? And will that happen again? Or will there become a point where it's, okay, there's no solution? Maybe focus on what Mr. Greer is talking about.
The committee wasn't traditionally ended. It was purposely in August, it was requested that they go on hiatus because they were at an end towards that, but we had already seen that there was an issue still between preschool and the seventh, eighth graders. And then even the number of seven, eighth graders that are already going up to the high school to the CTE program, which is working out really well. So that's, that we allowed them to stay as a committee, an advisory committee, just to look at, again, one more shot at, maybe we can fix this this way.
I'm just thinking if there's a world where parents said, no, they don't like that idea because it was the idea, and now the parents are presented with Lancaster, oh, let's go to the high school, we're all for it. So there was a certain amount of, you know, relative standing in the situation. If it is an absolute necessity, you know, having a comparative response might be beneficial.
I think we have to look, too, that it's, you know, things change, right? I mean, the demographics change, we know we're, you know, it's sort of projected that the enrollment will continue on this slope downwards, right? So the right answer might be no now, in 10 years, it might be something different, you know. So, like, we can't ever say, no, no, it's never gonna happen, we just don't know.
One of the other things that they're looking at, too, is the possibility, and it's not, but, that the seven, eighth grader will go to Whitefield. Just because it's two floors, easier for the older kids to go up and down the stairs. But the problem, the counterproblem is the fields and the, the sports and that kind of stuff is better suited to Lancaster. So, but they are looking even at that option.
You gotta, you gotta keep in mind that the main idea about combining this is it's a much better educational opportunity for all the students. If we have all the seven, eighth graders in the same place, it's going to drastically improve the education.
It also attempts to balance the tension between what we know is a substantial tax burden for our property owners in supporting the school budget for a five-town district and meeting the needs of our students. So there are some components of it that are economical, for sure. You know, certainly, one of the other messages we've heard very clearly this year is that increases in the school budget are not something that our property owners can sustain. So in, in the context of state funding and the limitations that it brings to rural districts like ours, there's an attempt, at least through this subcommittee, to figure out what other innovative solutions might exist for us in the north. I mean, we're good in the north country at figuring things out with not many resources. So part of it is that tasking of, in the context of limited resources, with lower scores for the academic standardized testing, how do we achieve a high-quality education for our kids that's consistent for all students from all towns? As a cooperative school district, this model is the idea that all, all pay so all can learn, right? How do we do that in a way that's fiscally responsible and produces high-quality education and is equitable for students regardless of their zip code? Within a pretty substantial geographic area, as you pointed out, it's, we're a big district geographically. And all of those things are in tension with each other right now. So pulling together a community group like a subcommittee with 17 people, part of that intention is to put good brains in the room to be innovative and figure some of that out.
Yes, sir.
Just in response to what was being said about Lancaster, here you have that it may be a good educational opportunity. Again, it's really far.
Yeah.
So from that perspective, as a parent of a child here, I'll say, oh, there's a much better educational opportunity just down the street in Bethlehem that doesn't require driving that far. Second, and it's talking about, you know, the surveys and why our education system in this district seems to be lagging behind, I'm just gonna throw it out there, I've heard from multiple teachers who used to work in Whitefield, who could work in Whitefield, and said, I'm not taking a work, any job in Whitefield because it's like the rightest stepson of the district. And all the resources go to Lancaster, and Whitefield doesn't get resources. And so we have a tranchage of instructors from the school, from what I've been told, or at least people that are not willing to even consider working at the school because of the impression that Lancaster is the golden child of this school district, and the other schools are not getting the attention that they deserve. Not sure if it's true or not, this is something you guys might wanna know because it's out there and it's something I hear a lot. But please have a question, though. So it seems like there's agreement that the current bus route is a problem. Is somebody looking at that? Or would we even start thinking of something?
We've been looking.
Yes, yes.
And what is being done? Is there a status update or anything?
Can, can you drive a bus?
You wanna be a bus driver? That shouldn't be.
That's really what it comes to.
But I will tell you, as a business owner.
They raised salaries, they did everything, right?
They raised.
Oh, they did, they, they significantly.
We did rearrange some, some of the, just recently, a few weeks ago, we did, because there's some outliers that really did make the move like 40 minutes longer.
And I think one of those, if I recall, one of those may have been at Bretton Woods.
Yes, yeah, which became a two-hour ride.
No, no, there's a different bus out that goes to Bretton Woods, so.
Right, and it's longer than the original bus was.
Oh, it's longer than the original bus ride?
Yeah, yeah. When they made the switches, when we stopped using the bus, because we could tolerate the hour. It became like an hour and a half.
A kid should not be on a bus for more than.
No, we all agree.
We totally called when we found out how long these kids are on the bus, right?
One of the other things, when we talked about seven, eight transition to Lancaster is it would be required that we have a direct bus from Bretton Woods directly to Lancaster, not stopping at the Whitefield School, not stopping at the high school, not, you know, and a separate bus from Jefferson, not stopping.
And that's how, but you can't even guarantee that a child is under an hour now. How do you think that's gonna happen magically? That's, that's when, I'm skeptical, when I see the current situation, now you're adding to it.
We can't fix one without the other, so we don't, like I said, we wouldn't make it worse just to get the seven, eight transition, if we needed to get the seven, eight transition.
We put a math teacher on the bus, you know? They don't, you know, they don't.
Put this man on the committee.
If they don't, cannot, they're very high, they have speed, you know?
And do, and do I understand, Dr. Anastasia, do I understand it's not just our district that needs bus drivers? I mean, it's just like, it's not just our district, it's like all over? That they, no, it's not all the same, but it, it is a very common problem. People just wanna walk?
Okay, any other public comment? That's it? Okay, public comment period remains open until 6:35. To go in accordance with the state law, that requires a half hour. If you do have a public comment from this point on, please raise your hand, and we will suspend whatever we're working on.
Man, this is, I know I'm beating a horse back here. I mean, just looking at the state numbers in general, I mean, 38% is the average proficiency for a student in this state, in general, we're below, in math, we're below that. And, and in English and reading is 51 or 52%, right? And I was, I mean, this is New Hampshire, I thought we'd be, you know, all rocket science here, but, you know, I was shocked by the overall state performance and proficiency, not, not just here, but overall.
Yes, ma'am.
I would think the pandemic had a little bit to do with this, I mean, there was a, some kids really lost.
Personally, I'm of the opinion that we're, we could use that excuse for a while, but we're pretty much at the end of that excuse.
I think it's a fact.
Oh, definitely.
Just a little bit.
But that's, as I explained, why we would be so low. That's everywhere, everybody had to be.
Right.
Exactly. But I mean, I think that's where you lost some kids sometimes.
Okay. So, any other public comment? And we will move on. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's approval. Dr. Rena Stacey.
Giles wants to just announce something.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just share real quickly, I just heard back from a state rep this morning from the Department of Education. And I've been selected as a finalist to serve as a delegate of New Hampshire to participate in the Senate Youth Program down in Washington, DC.
You make that really gross.
I don't know yet.
You'll still be, you'll still be here.
Oh, yes, oh, definitely.
So there's a seven finalists, and four are going to be chosen. So we're keeping our fingers crossed, to get to this point is amazing.
Yes, good for you. Thank you.
So I do, I do wanna comment to the public, I really appreciate your feedback, and we listen to you. We, we listen to you, and we appreciate it. I'm gonna do a little follow-up for pre-K. Starting Monday, the four-year-old program will be extended to include an additional full day on Wednesday, so they'll be going Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Three-year-old program remains the same. The Whitefield Elementary School staffing, Ms. Robyn Sweet has been transferred from Lancaster to teach English Language Arts and Social Studies in grade five, along with Isabel. David Hool's been transferred from Lancaster to teach part-time day one at Whitefield, and he'll continue his Tuesday, Thursday schedule. He's a part-time employee, very long, spent, he's retired from, from our district. Then Ms. Janine Holmes has been transferred to West to teach the sixth grade math science alongside me. So we have some, some relief from our staffing shortage. And we're still, we're still have some advertisements up there that are all active. So Nesdeck visited the high school. So, uh, NESDEC visited the high school, this is a team of people, it's called New England Association of School Colleges Accreditation Process, and they come in every ten years and doing the accreditation of the high school. And I have some preliminary results and recommendations from them. The report, the final report will be in in about four weeks. But, uh, we feel that this is spot-on, it was a really good exercise, the high school worked really hard to get through this, this process. What they did is they went through five standards and gave accommodations and recommendations for each standard. I'm gonna tell you what they are. Standard one is the learning culture. And accommodations were all the revamped course offerings that they have, the climate of safety, and the civics action that is underway. Some recommendations is data analysis process, curriculum development with time to do the work. And they are actively committed to image of a grad. Standard two is student learning. Accommodations are robust off, offering of courses. Students have a voice for change and course offerings driven by student voice along the master schedule. The recommendations are vertically aligned, consistent format of curriculum, including middle school and consistent grading system and reporting. Standard three is professional practices. Accommodations are voices are heard from students, staff, parents, and community. Formal and informal professional development of teachers, full-time teacher leader, common planning time for co-teachers. The recommendations are additional PD for utilizing and analyzing data, and PD for heterogeneous grouping in classes. Formal opportunity for staff to unpack data and implement. Standard four is learning support. Accommodations are experienced school librarian, adventure ed program, and plus four of sports, of supports for all students. The recommendations are to ensure a level of certified professionals and resources for supports. Case managers burnout, co-teaching and case managing together. And lastly, standard five is learning resources. Accommodations are the school buildings and grounds, the student learning commons, gender-neutral bathrooms, one-on-one Chromebooks, small class sizes, extensive opportunities, EOP school safety, managing forestry on property. The recommendations is that we need a science lab upgrade, continuing updating, updating CTE, collaborative time, and continue to do curriculum work. And the overall priority areas are create formal processes for assessing the image of a grad, curriculum development, and develop a school improvement plan with established timelines. So, what echoes across this and all of the, uh, standards is the curriculum. We really need to get our curriculum work, um, completed and aligned. So, that, that will also help with the, with the outcomes as well. And we'll, now, I know I could do it during the, uh, time when we talk about advisory committees, but I have a little update about the advisory committees and what we've been doing. This is the seven, eight and the pre-K advisory committee. We had some subcommittee members doing some research and they came out with just a quick synopsis of their research. One of the areas was facility readiness. A review of facilities with building principles showed that both Whitefield and Lancaster would have the space necessary to move seven, eight district-wide to Lancaster and all pre-K students to Whitefield. Further clarification is needed at Whitefield regarding the building being two-story and young students, students accessing the second story. West is unique in that we have, the front of the building is two-story, whereas the rear has direct access to the ground level because the school is built into a hill. Additionally, West has been approved for a playground specific to the needs of young children and a second playground for older elementary students. Lancaster would be more conduct, a more conducive spot for middle school students because of accessibility to most middle school athletic fields and a gymnasium where teams practice and play their home games. Middle school field hockey would still take place on the Whitefield grounds and busing from middle school students to, from Lancaster to Whitefield is already in place. Lancaster also has slightly larger classrooms that are more useful for older students and two science labs if needed, while Whitefield has only one science lab. So, that was just the, there's no opinion, it's just that the way it is. And we all know that about the two facilities. So, then another subcommittee did staffing and programming. In the preschool area, we are recommending two five-day, full-day, four-year-old classrooms. The frequency and duration of the three-year-old program is still to be determined, but would be between three and five, half or full days, depending on the needs of the students. Staffing would include two FTEs for the four-year-old program and a one full-time three-year-old program. For middle school, the recommendation is eight teachers, two per content area, and two and a half special educators. Given projected combined middle school population based on current enrollment, this would allow for class sizes of fourteen to eighteen over the next seven years. Additional school counselors would be required as would, with the possibility of some additional supports and learning comments. So, that's that data, know what that data is. Transportation, this is just a mess. It's all hypothetical because we haven't, we did talk to the bus company. And we asked them about direct routes from Twin to Lancaster, Dalton to Lancaster, Jefferson to Lancaster. They couldn't quite wrap their heads around it. So, we kinda dropped it right there at that point and said, when, when we further in the study, we will get that information. And then the preschool transportation through just, is, most of the kids in preschool do have IEP, so we provide the transportation in our small, um, vans that we have. But parents do, um, usually bring their preschool kids. And then I went through and did the enrollment and I won't go through every grade level, but, um, grade seven and eight would be a hundred and fourteen kids at, in one school, if, if we combined it. And we can't say the numbers for the pre-K three and four because we don't, we don't know who, the threes that are coming in. And because we have such a small number of threes now, we can't, we don't know. But we're doing some child finding, coming up in the spring. So, that's, that's the progress we've made on the study. And then the surveys were completed today and I gave them to Jeremy to blast out tonight to get the parent input. And so, I mean, that's what drove our decision last time was the surveys. That's where we are.
Can I say something?
Yep.
The committee that met, three of us met with the committee that was here at the high school.
And NIESK.
The NIESK committee. And I was very, very pleased that the gentleman that was heading up that committee said that he was so impressed with our students that when he enters the school, he always speaks to the students, says good morning, and welcomes them and things like that. He says, our students would stop and speak to him, say good morning, they were very polite. And he says, in a lot of schools, they just walk by him and won't even look at him.
He was truly impressed.
And he says he was unbelievably impressed with our students.
Next is Assistant Superintendent's report. Rob is not here and Gary's gonna fill in for him.
So, as you know, our forestry plan is out of date for the district. So, Dave Falconham, who is the forester for the Peter Powell property that's gonna be, they're gonna be logging the bus to school property this winter, he's put a proposal in to update our plan. He'd like to work with Kayla Graham's class and take them to, like, the log, you know, to s, see how forest is gonna be logging, um, over Peter Powell's forestry plan and, uh, work with them to update ours, our plan. So, with this, I mean, there's a, a charge, a cost. So, what he's recommended is there's a, cutting a three-to-five acre piece up on State Hill, which is up behind the senior rock with the seniors paint every year. In that area, will serve as a log yard for Peter Powell's. They can put some logs there while they're logging. And, um, it'll also update, uh, not update, but make our ski trail better. Get some of that woods cleared away. So, the money from that, that they get for the wood off that three-to-five acre piece can go towards the, uh, cost of this project, they said, do. So, there'll be, there'll be rema, uh, map, mapping. Maps, um, classroom time, and, um, out in the field time with this, with Kayla's class. So, there's a action agenda, action agenda item.
Right.
For this.
Yeah, and we're gonna include Primax in with, um, the plans for having the kids out there. Make sure that it's allowed for, and that everybody's safe, yeah.
It's a nice example of how our CTE program is able to work with community and, and learn from real-world examples of how, what they're learning in the classroom applies in real world.
This is a ten-year, a ten-year plan that is.
That they're gonna prepare for us.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We'll be going.
We can do questions when it comes up.
Yeah. Director of Finance, do you have anything to add tonight, Melissa? Okay.
The budget's coming along, we're first, um, starting the salaries, the cost driver, right? We're gonna start there. We're working really hard, um, this week and next week, getting all of our curriculum costs. And then we're gonna meet with the principals and we're gonna say, this is how much money we have left, how are we gonna spend this? So, we, we heard what you wanted for bottom line and we're, we're approaching it a little bit different. And the special ed is special ed, I mean, we can't, we can't mess around with the mandatory things, but we'll, we'll tease all that up pretty soon.
Committee reports, Ed programming. Anything new?
Hot news from Ed programming lately is just what we talked about a little bit earlier in response to Mr. Graves' question.
Facilities, Mr. Brady.
You have minutes in your packet. The Whitefield HVAC system is coming along, it should be finished soon. The reason we were so cold at the last board meeting when we held it in Whitefield was they had the fans reversed, so they were pulling cold air in instead of putting the air under the vehicle. So, that was done at the factory, they had to, uh, solve that problem. They're going to be putting, they're wiring to put, uh, smoke detectors into the air system and the gymnasium. All right, and, uh, he talked about the Falconham Forest Plan. That would, uh, cost us about seventeen dollars an acre for a total of about, uh, six thousand dollars. The reason that we agreed to go, the board approved it to go with the Falconham guy is that they're willing to work with the students, which we've never had before. So, the students would actually learn from this, all right? And that would be a major, major accomplishment, okay? And, uh, and he spoke about the plan, hopefully to get enough trees that he can pay for anyway. The Whitefield doors, we have some of them, they're, uh, looking into getting a safety grant to get them changed because they have a high time closing some of them and they wanna make sure that, uh, the doors are safe. And then we discussed, uh, other parts. The folding walls in Lancaster are looking into getting them repaired. That, uh, they're not looking in such good shape. And pressure washing the panel along the top of high school, which is, looks so dirty and miserable and maybe try to get someone to do that. All right, uh, I think that's about all of it, unless I'm forgetting something.
Next is Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee is still currently meeting for negotiations with the WMEA on their ongoing. So, all I need to say about that? The negotiations. Policy, anything new? Your chair is not here.
There's something in the.
There's just one in the action here that, right? District Wellness.
We have a meeting coming up with the coordinators of the subcommittees on the eighth of November. So, that'll be, um, for our November ninth meeting, I'll be able to.
And through that committee, Katie worked really hard and Chris to get, um, John Howgan here for Ryan's story. It's in January, I don't exactly remember the date, but, um, he's coming to do a presentation to the high school kids. And we're gonna have both middle schools come together and have the presentation at the high school and also a presentation in the evening for parents. It's about bullying and suicide prevention. We've got a grant for the buses and you got the grant for the presentation.
For speaker?
Yeah.
So, it's at no cost to the district, but it is a pretty compelling, um, offering from a parent who has lost a child to death by suicide and can speak directly to the, not that bullying was the cause of the suicide, but that it was a contributing factor to his child's mental state. It's pretty powerful stuff.
Sounds interesting. Okay, unfinished business, the Advisory Committee updates, which we've done the seven, eight transition. For those that don't know, we are, we did begin a new, or it is beginning, forming a new advisory committee for a capital improvement plan for all three buildings. We have been fortunate in that we've replaced just about all the roofs in all the schools as well as the heating systems in all the schools without raising a bond issue or, um, using upper and federal money and capital improvement, uh, capital plan money that was already in place. So, we have no debt, but this committee will look at what still needs to be done. And I'm not sure who's been to the high school lately. The access road into the high schools in pretty tough shape. The road into Lancaster schools in pretty rough shape, as well as the parking lot. And same with Whitefield. So, they're gonna look at all the issues that need to be addressed and then look at possible ways to fund them. So, I think, we don't have the names yet, right? I think it's the next meeting.
I think it's tonight, tonight.
Oh, you do have, we do have the names, so. There is, the new committee will be forming soon.
Our buildings are in the baddest shape they've been in in years, okay? Lancaster and Whitefield both have brand-new roofs. The high school has only one portion left to do, all right, which is a major investment because it's probably gonna end up costing these coaches too many to do that.
And the heating systems.
We've got it done and the new heating systems and everything. They're in excellent shape, actually.
I think the nice thing about Rob taking on the, the Capital Plan Project too is that it allows us to schedule and, and fundraise carefully and thoughtfully for those, those improvements so that we're not feeling surprised by failures of our, our actual part facilities. And, and so that our facilities team is able to plan their days out without worrying about which fires around the next corner and kick into some of that preventative maintenance that long-term saves the district substantially.
Okay, new business, any new business? Business, then we move on to the action agenda. Action Agenda Item Number One, to accept the following resignation, Christine Quigley, White Mountain Regional High School, Adventure Education Paraprofessional, effective October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Ben.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Two, to approve the following nominations, Jordan Garrett, Lancaster Elementary School, middle school science teacher. Step one, be salary forty thousand eight hundred dollars to be prorated pending emergency authorization from the Department of Education. Do I have a motion?
No.
Evelyn?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Three, to approve the following building leadership team, co-curricular, and coaching nominations. I will first accept the motion to waive.
Waive the reading of the names.
Waive the reading of the names. By Chris.
Ian Bennett got it for you.
And seconded by Ben. All in favor? Any opposed? We waived the reading of many names. So, Action Agenda Item Now, we're on the motion to approve the following building leadership team, co-curricular, and coaching nominations as listed in the Act. as listed in the Action Agenda Item. Do I have a motion? Moved by Chris.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ben. Any discussion of questions?
I do have one question, so.
You did this to us last time.
I know, I know, I'm gonna do it again, so.
Did you have to give?
The the number of the high school building leadership team is eight, and that includes one that's funded by the VAR grant.
So we moved, we moved her from the distribution team. Where, is it on there now?
It is.
I'm trying to find it now.
Yeah, there's one name that's listed as funded by the VAR grant.
So that J G, J G is. She's gone wrong, she's now gonna be. No, I don't even see it on here. I think I'm missing a page.
It's the, oh, no, that's the right.
Okay, so that should have been removed. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Brady. Maybe I didn't tell Steph.
Okay, all right.
Hello, Jen Granducci?
Yep.
So that's being removed?
Yes, from, it's, she won't be a building near building.
So I'll move to amend the list by striking that name. I second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And now a motion on the entire list remaining. Moved by Chris?
Well, no, it was already moved.
Oh, we just got sorry. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Four, to approve the window security film project at the White Mountain Regional High School not to exceed the total amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents, funds to come from the SAFE grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars and the remaining ten thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents to come from the Life Safety Deficiencies Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a motion? Moved by Evelyn?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ben. Any questions?
Yep, how much, what's the balance in that Life Safety Deficiency Capital Reserve Fund? Do you have that, Melissa, by chance?
I do not have it.
Is this gonna dry it up, or is there still plenty left in there?
I think there was enough left, yeah. I don't think it's gonna max it out. But I can bring those next time.
Okay, or just send them with the packet or whatever.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Five, to approve the development of the ten-year forestry plan from New England Forestry Consultants, amount not to exceed six thousand thirty-four dollars with funds to come from the Forest Timber Revenue Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris?
Seconded.
Seconded by Herb. Any questions or comments?
Yep.
Yes?
So there's a cost there now that I see. In the presentation, it was, they talked about offsetting that cost, some with the timber from that section above the rock, whatever you call it. Any idea what the offset will be?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And my question then would be.
I believe Rob was hoping it break even.
It's gonna even out. So we pay out of the capital, the forest funds, six thousand. And then they expect to make six thousand from the forest, the timber, which will go back into the Forest River Fund.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to get to. So we're hoping that it's gonna be a wash, but we don't know.
Right, can't be sure until you.
Right, okay. So then my next question is, it was a three to, three to five acre.
Yeah, three to five acre piece.
How, who makes that decision? As to if it's three or four or five?
I believe the forester will probably be the one that makes the final decision.
Okay, and he is working for us?
He's working for both us and Peter Powell. He's working for Peter Powell, but he's willing to come on to help us out also.
Right, which I'm all for. I just wanna make sure that we're protecting our assets as well in terms of he, when he's deciding if it's three or five acres or four and a half, whatever that happen, he at that point has our best interest in.
I I imagine probably the three to five acres is, depending on how heavily it's wooded. So like if we, maybe he thinks if, you know, cutting three acres, he's not, it's not gonna be enough to pay for it. We'll just go for four, four or five acres. Until, you know, so it evens out.
The size will depend on, that's what he's trying to get.
I think so.
And he's trying to cover that, okay.
Then I'm fine with it.
So we're washed.
Any other questions? Motion was made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Six, to appoint the following members to the Capital Improvement Planning Advisory Committee to the Board. James Aikman, Jerry Greer, Teresa Russo, George Broder, Scott Holmes, Gary Brown, Melissa Wadsworth, Cheryl Plumlee, James Brady, and Marion Anastasia.
I believe Rob's name got.
He left his own name out of his own committee. And Rob Scott.
I'll move it with the amendment that we add Rob's name.
Motion made, seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ben. Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Seven, to approve the purchase of ten Kenwood portable radios, five for Whitefield Elementary School, five for Lancaster Elementary School from Tac Two Communications, in the amount not to exceed three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, funds to come from the Life Safety Deficiencies Capital Reserve Fund. Moved by Chris?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Evelyn. Any questions?
Can anybody, is that you, Jeremy? Is that Rob?
That's Rob. So just reading my notes here. It was found, just recognized this year that each school was short like five radios. They need an additional five radios per school.
Okay, and so these are basically, we're just adding to the number that we already have.
Adding to the number we already have.
It's not a new one.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And so is it safe to then assume that the high school isn't short radios or doesn't use them?
Correct.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Eight, to approve the following fundraiser crowdfunding request with capital funds anticipated to exceed five hundred dollars. Class of twenty twenty-five, the Halloween Dance. Class of twenty twenty-five, pie sales. Life Skills Program, Pancake Breakfast and fundraisers for field trips, special events. Lancaster Elementary School Grade Six Reed Sales and Varsity Girls Basketball Fundraising fundraising campaign that they expect to make five hundred dollars. I'm not sure what they're going to do.
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Herb. Any other questions? This is in response to finding that our policy requires us to pre-approve anytime that a older five-hundred-dollar fundraiser is anticipated.
And what I wanna add, none of these have it, but Jeremy and Melissa are working really hard trying to find a venue in which if we, something like Venmo, but not Venmo, because we don't like that. Something so that money can be filtered that way.
Electronically.
Haven't found one, haven't we?
So these are all action-hand events?
The the company that we use for the meal system, LinkQ.
The goal.
Yeah, the goal.
Because we're already set up, the parents already have a portal. And the idea would be you don't have to get access to a whole other system. They're secure because we're using.
And they're through the data privacy.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We do need to have a.
I think, sorry, it's my moderator coming out. I think we gotta go back to number six. I don't think we can just add Rob. I think we have to vote, we have to amend that Action Agenda Item first, and then we can vote on it. We can't just add him into it.
So move it, then amend it, then load it.
All right, so we'll go back to Action Agenda Item.
He was added first.[1695.44]